Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the council in the city of Long Beach on Tuesday, December 6, 2016 at 7:00 PM. By the local Councilman Braga.
Here.
Councilmember Vanell.
Yeah.
Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Vice President Wong.
President Torres.
Here.
From the regular debate, President of City Manager Jack Sherry, Corporation Councilwoman Stacy Johnson, salute to the flag.
Mr. Fray.
Your legal tonight?
Congratulations.
To the flag of the United States of America, as to your power, for which it stands, from the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One very last mention before we begin. The Good and Welfare signup is available for folks. Remember that the rule we've held onto here for many years that during the meeting, we asked that you sign up for that and try to get this done signing up for Good and Welfare before the meeting is over. And with that, I'll ask our City Manager to give us the update for this request. The city would like to thank everyone who attended the Kennedy Plaza tree lighting on Friday. We'd like to offer a big thank you to our sponsor, Bethpage Federal Credit Union and all of our partners, including the Waffle Cabin and everyone who participated for helping make the event a big success. Tomorrow, Wednesday, December 7th, the Joint Veterans Organization of Long Beach invites all to honor more than 2,400 soldiers, Marines, and Seamen who lost their lives when the Japanese Air Force attacked Pearl Harbor 75 years ago. Ceremony will take place in the Long Beach Ice Arena at 11:00 AM. This Saturday, December 10th, the rec will hold its annual Children's Holiday Show beginning at 11:00 AM in the Long Beach Middle School Auditorium. The event is free. For further information, call 431-3890. Also this Saturday, the Fourth Annual West End Electric Light Parade will take place, featuring antique cars, fire trucks, boats, and even a couch on wheels, all wrapped in holiday lights. The parade begins at 6:30 PM on Ohio Avenue or march along West Beach Street ending on New York Avenue. In addition, Saturday from 11:00 to 1, invite everyone to a special toy drive event at the Bethpage Federal Credit Union Ranch along across the street from the office. And on Saturday, December 17th, the Ice Arena from 3:00 to 6, local charity, I Am a Kid That Gives, will be hosted with Sixth Annual Holiday Wrapped Party for Purpose. Admission is free with the donation of a new unwrapped toy to benefit under served childrens in the Long Island and New York City area. The Long Beach Historical Society is sponsoring an exciting vintage holiday boutique shopping experience. Boutique will be available for shoppers on the 10th, 11th, 17th, and 18th, from 12:00 to 6:00. More information, please call the zoom at 432-1192. And the Long Beach Chamber Congress of the City of Long Beach are inviting all businesses with storefront windows to light up the holidays and enter the LBNY Window Decorating Contest. Window Decorating Contest fundraises over the holiday season, creating a festive and beautiful downtown that showcases our businesses. Winning storefronts will be awarded with grand prize of a full page ad in the Herald. Visit longbeachchamber.com for more details. And for more details, of course, on all of the events, visit longbeachny.com.
Our first item this evening is resolution authorizing the City Manager to enter interim agreement for water sewer testing at the water treatment plant.
Okay, this is a standard annual contract. The city has already taken place for the testing of water and sewer at the water treatment plant. The meeting is required by the New York State Department of Wildlife and Conservation and the Nassau County Department of Health and Public Health testing. Are there any comments, questions from the council regarding this item number one, the special president we do? Any comments from the public on this item number one, a very important part of what we do here in the city of Long Beach? Okay, good time, we're gonna move on to our next item.
All right, two is resolution authorizing several of the social order procedures.
Okay, these are anticipated settlements and were budgeted for in the current fiscal year. I believe our assessor is here and asks her to give us a brief overview. Very good. Wow. It's great to see you.
Hello.
Welcome, welcome.
Okay. Basically, these are settlements, they, it's over a year, because on two calendars. We grow our settlements by December because it ends the year. And parole purposes do, so they belong to the final management of parole. And we go along with the meeting because it's easier to have a little fun someplace combined.
And Mrs. Assessor, what exactly does the settlement mean for Long Beach? Just for clarification to people that don't really understand what that means.
A lot of candidates in the back here, if there's something wrong with the assessment, at this time, they can correct it. The assessments are fine, they stay the same. We've got over the years, some of the assessments had to be revised.
These are disputes, people that question what they've been trying?
These cases date back the early's, the latest is the 2011.
I see. Okay. Any comments, questions for our assessors from the council? Anybody from the public that would like a question, if you have any question regarding assessment and these disputes and the settlement that we reached? Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Fray, thank you so much for being here.
Item number three is resolution authorizing publication of a notice of public hearing and application of legal or legal requirements. Prepare to study for these parking industry for a foot spa designed as publication only, hearing read up December 20th at 7:00 PM.
Great. Okay.
Item one is resolution authorizing the City Manager to enter interim agreement for water sewer testing at the water treatment plant, if it's solely sponsored here.
Please move the option aside.
Come on, please. I'm sorry, man.
One second.
I'll second that.
Board, question seven.
Yes.
Question eight.
Yes.
Yes.
Vice President Wong. President Torres.
Yes.
Item two is resolution authorizing settlement of social order procedures. Please move the option aside.
Come on.
One second.
Number three.
Board, question four.
Yes.
Question five.
Yes.
Question six.
Yes.
Vice President Wong.
Yes.
Yes. Item three is resolution authorizing publication of a notice of public hearing and application of legal or legal requirements. Prepare to study for these parking industry for appropriate spot. Please move the option aside.
I will.
One second.
I'll, I'll second that.
Board, question four.
Yes.
Question five.
Yes.
Question six.
Yes.
Vice President Wong.
Yes.
President Torres.
Yes.
City Manager, want to press our report by one, six, four, and make motion calls to you.
I'll make one.
I will.
Board, question four.
Yes.
Question five.
Yes.
Vice President Wong.
Yes.
President Torres.
Yes. That concludes the official part of our meeting and our intro to the Good and Welfare. And again, as I mentioned earlier, we need and we would prefer to hear from every one of you if we can. And that's why we even said the three minute limit so that we can hear from everyone. Again, we welcome everyone here tonight. And our first person that's here to speak is, of course, Mr. Glitzer. Welcome, Mr. Glitzer. Good to see you.
Good evening. My colleagues are a little bit in bad cold. Hey, Glitzer, from the ARON Street. And this evening, I'd like to read a letter that is actually, you should receive tomorrow from the work, Beach Bay organization. It starts off as follows. Respectable members of the City Council and City Manager, Beach Bay Board strongly disagrees with the South Nassau proposal, the so-called Oceanside and Long Beach alternative plan. Since it will serve to further diminish quality, affordability, and access to healthcare services for the Long Beach area on the community. In addition, Beach Bay believes that the South Nassau proposal is neither a medically sound strategy nor legally justified. Our board has initiated a civil suit with FEMA on July 4th of this year, challenging whether the proposed allocation of over $130 million in Sandy relief funds to Oceanside complies with the intent of the alternative use regulations. We anticipate response from FEMA by the end of the month and will seek an expedited decision by the Sandy Harbor in early 2017. Until this decision is rendered, our board strongly urges the Long Beach City Council and the City Manager to do the following two things. First, do not take any actions that would approve or accelerate the use of FEMA or other funds for construction of the alternative facility. The basis for this request is that if the Army agrees with our suit, then the resulting construction is decidedly different than what South Nassau has currently proposed. Second point, not approve any rezoning of the existing property for any purpose or any time prior to the FEMA decision. More importantly, do not approve any zoning changes that would permit the construction of a multi-tented residential building. The basis for this request is that many Long Beach residents are concerned about South Nassau's primary motive is to sell the Long Beach property to realize significant financial gain. While evaluating this request, please review the two attachments and provide further clarity. The first are details of our suit and the second is a one-page summary of the reasons why Beach Bay averes that the South Nassau proposal is not in the best interest of the Long Beach area and in particular for the city itself. The Beach Bay Board would be happy to answer any questions you may have to meet with you to discuss this request further. Look forward to any requests and comments you have to make.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Glitzer. My name. Thank you for the email I received yesterday with the statement, so I'm aware of it. You had sent me some additional documents that I requested, which I have not had a chance to read, I got them today. Although I can't comment obviously on the lawsuits, I have publicly stated that I'm opposed to the FEMA money being spent exclusively in Oceanside and that money should be spent in Long Beach. So what you're proposing, I believe, is reasonable. I spoke to my office, Bernino, and suggested also that you reach out to the zoning board. I support what you are suggesting was within the jurisdiction of the city. So thank you for taking the time, continuing to volunteer for this important cause.
We thank you for continuing and very strong support of you. And does it continue?
Thank you. Once again, I too also support your efforts. As previously stated, I truly believe that access to quality healthcare is a human right and so I encourage you to pursue your efforts.
Yeah, we underline justice as part of our appeal here. There isn't justice that this is currently being propagated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment. First of all, I'd like to commend the Beach Bay organization for the kind of work over the years that you've done. And we realize that everything that you've done has been in the best interest of this community and its residents. And again, we commend you and thank you so much for the work you've been doing.
Thank you, President Torres.
Okay, and thank you again. Our next person that we have for is Mr. Phil Schlitz. Phil, if you, yes, sir. Mr. Schlitz, welcome.
Phil Schlitz, 365 East Wall Street. Good evening, City Council, City Manager, City Coach, and City Attorney. I've been coming to City Council meetings for the last five years. The reason why, I thought back then when I moved here, that I wanted to be active and that I might have a possible impact on this community, the great community, uh, community to work and play and all of that. But after the last year or so, people have been speaking out as far as how we run government and how we have a City Council. And I am quite annoyed about some people who haven't done their homework like I have, as far as rotation of who should sit in the City Council chair. I know I'm talking about Len Torres, but that's my personal opinion. He is phenomenal. He has kept this city afloat. But a law is a law and I'm sure some of you have heard of, I forgot what show it is, just give me the facts. I believe the facts will clear up this one issue that I find to be annoying sitting here. It's turning people against people and we don't need that. We need to unite and of course, stand by the law. And when the law speaks, you have to obey it. And when it's 4-1 on an issue as far as a budget, you don't get up there and have a argument with the City Ma, uh, with the city on what did you spend this one? It was a vote, it was 4-1. Some of you might not like what you're saying, but I'm just telling you about, it's sound and backed in the nation. So if those people talk about rotation, if they have facts written upon us, we have an attorney who does a very good job. And they just have to live by what the law is. We might not like who our president is, but we have to deal, he's our president-elect, and we have to deal with it. We'll see what happens. But as far as the rotation of the City Council, I believe the people don't have their facts. The law is the law. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Schlitz. Okay, we have our next person, but this is Nora Egan. Is she here?
Hey, Nora Egan. I just have a question about the Brady Wreck. I believe that they're not licensed or insured in Long Beach. And I've been paying into it, as everybody has, for two years. And I personally had them out, like the judgment were great, but they were on my property for 35 minutes, 40 minutes. If they had done something wrong, I would have ultimately been responsible. And I wonder if who dropped the ball and didn't find out that they had a valid license to work here?
That's a good question.
And what happens now? I opted out, but like what happens now? Because when I called Brady.
Brady uses a licensed one.
They told me that they didn't know I had to speak to legal.
I'm sorry.
They just told me that I had to speak with legal. They wouldn't answer any questions. When I called the city.
When you expect to answer any questions?
But when I called the city, no department could give me a name of a licensed plumber, that they were using.
Right, but there's only a limited amount of departments in the city that actually are familiar with Brady and their operations.
Well, I was transferred to pretty much every department, yours, insurance, public works, the water.
I mean, I don't have the name of the company and I do know that they use a Long Beach licensed plumber.
But I do know that a Long Beach licensed plumber was not at my house, but they were there.
Do you know his name?
There were two judgments on Brady Wreck. That's the only ID that they showed me, because it's not one.
Do you know whether they were subcontracting, because that is permitted under Brady Wreck's contract?
No, but would they not have showed me some of my names, David, or James Field, or?
Did you find that the name just provided for example? Now we can do it.
But it was. Okay, so then who dropped the ball, opting us all into this?
Who dropped the ball? I have a question.
They're not, they're not licensed in Long Beach to work unless they're working with.
No, they're subcontracting, which permit under their agreement to a licensed Long Beach plumber.
Okay, so can you, if I call your office tomorrow, would you give me the name of who they're?
Yes, I'm sorry, just kind of, I don't have it handy today, but I will.
Anybody from your office, someone have been able to find out that information when I called?
I had, I'm serious, I just care for Brady and the company, I'm not playing.
Right, but when I called your office, would somebody who works in your office know that information instead of passing it along?
You know, I don't know what to know.
You don't know? Okay. Can someone speak to the process in terms of getting this information out to residents? I think there seems to be a disconnect here, so is there a way for us in the city to hold some information, some generic information, so that we won't have this into a situation we get? Can we post it somewhere? You can see through it. I want to see, like, help with the video in the back.
Sure. My rock, perhaps the information will have been handed posted.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, David. Very good, very good question. Mr. Marcus Tinker. Listen.
Marcus Tinker, resident here in Long Beach. Only have one question. Seeing how in two weeks we'll be counseling the doggies last week at the City Council meeting, what's the protocol to replace her? If there's someone that you guys appoint, and if it is, can the residents know who you guys are considering to appoint to the City Council seat?
Well, at this point right now, what we're looking at is putting together a vetting system, putting together some goals. And it's a decision that we as a council will have to make. Right now, we not getting to leave to set these goals. But vetting has to take place and it's a decision that we will make here at the council. And we will announce who will be, who that person will be. But it's a system that, of course, requires that we review, we get regimented people after we set a goal of, you know, the kind of individual we need to be on the council. So at this point, we, we're not ready to be able to announce that yet.
Okay, so if you guys don't go there, would you leave the seat vacant until the next amendment is issued?
We, we're not really sure. We really have not been able to sit down to determine what the best direction is for us right now. But it's been protocol over the last few years that in filling a seat that becomes vacant, we vet people, we go through an interview process, and we take a vote. That's basically how we do that. It's been a protocol. I don't think I've ever been on the council where a seat was left vacant. But it certainly is a possibility, but we haven't decided on it.
If I may, in terms of appointment, if there needs to be a majority of the council members and perhaps we're trying to see if we can speak better to this in terms of the city protocol? And if there's not a majority, there's an option of having a special election, is that correct?
Well, you have to ask the governor for a special election.
Okay, so that is in fact an option?
If the governor prefers it, yes.
Right, okay. But in terms of appointment, there has to be a unanimous, is it a majority?
Majority, it is a majority. Okay, thank you, Ms. Tinker. We're very well taken, super deserved we have. Our next person is Ms. Lindy Dolberg, over in Long Beach, correct? Lindy Dolberg, welcome.
Thank you.
Oh my goodness, I, that is, good to see you.
And that's my, wait, can you wait?
Yes, 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 yes.
Hi, good evening, everybody. I am wanting to discuss this evening, you guys, the handicap parking in the West End. So I wanted to applaud the Department of Public Works and whoever it is that has put some handicap, some wonderful handicap parking back in the West End. I noticed that there has been, I don't want to say a stopper lot, but it seems over the years, there is much more than there has been. But I got into a little tick on Sunday after the football game with somebody who was taking up way too much, like, I, I guess my question to you is, and maybe the Department of Public Works can talk about this. Are there two spots on the corner of, are there two spots actually, the corner of Viogni and Beach, North Side, and the corner of Minnesota and Beach, South Side? Which is by the Knights of Columbus and then outside the barbershop. Are these two spots or are they, are they one spot? I guess my general, is my first question. I believe there are two spots. But sometimes there are requires it take up the whole spot and it's one spot. So I guess our general question first is, is it forced two spots or is it one spot? Does anybody know this?
I don't know that anyone's going to know that specific opposite top of their head, but I'm going to ask the Department of Public Works and Police Department to have a look for it.
Okay, so then a question is, if it is two spots, they need to be marked two spots. Either on the handicap spot or on Beach Street with that wonderful blue handicap color parking pink. Needs to be definitely declared handicap parking.
You do realize that sometimes, although it is a handicap, whether it's one or two, and it's first come, first served, wherever it can get there first. And sometimes the person that lives there and that normally parks there, another person may come from out of town that's handicapped because of handicap sticker, makes the parking and that's since a difficult thing.
It is, I completely understand that. But being a resident and wanting to not go to the bridge where there's plenty full of parking and want to patronize the West End as much as possible, I do believe there should be accessible parking more. And I'm probably going to get flagged from the people behind me who live there and, you know, are going to lose their spots, but it should be definitely marked for our people.
We appreciate the comment.
Okay.
It's certainly an excellent question.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm going to ask you to give a presentation in the locations to our staff over there, and the hospital and the police, go over there.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you again. Our next person is Ms. Mary Bolasevich.
Hi, Mary Bolasevich. I'm speaking tonight myself. I have a great concern what went on at the ice rink with the carbon dioxide. I did lose a brother 30 years ago to carbon dioxide. And I have a great concern for the children and the employees there. We have their tamboni, it has emissions, and I would implore you to look into CO detectors. We have to have them in our homes. Why wouldn't we have them in a public place? That to me is really being negligent, especially being you have a tamboni, using gas, and having emissions. And that'll last for a couple of days. And as I said, it's odorless, you don't smell it. I had a brother die after that plane. And quite honestly, I don't want to see any little kid with any kind of health issue who calls them not like this. Thank you.
Thank you, one second. Mary, I would just mention that I think we all share those concerns. And when we learned that there were not carbon dioxide detectors at some of those locations, even though there weren't requirements, I think we all agree that that's not good enough. And I, just so you know, we immediately ordered carbon dioxide detectors at all city facilities and there are some at the Ice Arena. And they were installed before the Ice Arena reopened back here. Thank you again, Ms. Bolasevich. We have Allison Blanchett, welcome. Welcome, Allison.
Hi, I just want to echo a little bit of the catchor name, what you think about parking for people with disabilities. That is really important for her, should absolutely be marked for that. And if anybody has a problem with two spots for more people with disabilities, then you know what? You can tell them that I'm seeing you. I have two things I want to talk about. One, I'd send. to talk about. One, I sent you guys an email, I think, about this. I just wanted to get more information regarding of those changes in the 2017 to 2021 transportation improvement program, NIMTIC's comment period ends December fourteenth. So I need to respond immediately. And what I'm looking for is, there is one specific project where three quarters of a million dollars is coming in and appears to be funding for an acquisition for our project administration to manage and support cattle projects and general administration file letter DOT. Is that correct? If so, what's the hiring process? Will this increase in, will this increase in acquisition have any relief on overtime in DOT department? I'm requesting transparency and hiring and shift in job duties. There is also money coming in for security cameras for the bus garage station on the buses. We already had cameras on some buses, I don't know if it was the old ones, there was definitely cameras in the DOT garage, I've seen them. So are these new cameras, are these new or are these additional cameras? Will they get enough length to capture some of the Long Island Railroad Station area? I was informed that cameras were being ordered last summer by Mr. Tegney. Are these the same cameras or additional ones? And finally, funding for bus shelters, which is perplexing, as we've been told they were coming, I've been told this since 2012 that they were on order, they're coming, you're taking your hat because you remember this. I've been talking about this forever. I'd like to know who has been responsible for writing these transit grants that, you know, for the past five years have been told that they have been ordering, they're on their way, clearly, you know, they're not on their way. So what's going on with that? And then finally, regarding the 2015 city employee wages, and they're posted on Newsday, this comment has absolutely nothing to do with workers, this has nothing to do with dispatchers and laborers, this has everything to do with mismanagement and accountability. This is the employees for bus dispatchers who accumulated thirty-nine thousand dollars in overtime, making a collective amount of four hundred thousand dollars. One dispatcher makes more in the transportation department than any other person working on transportation in Long Island, even more than traffic engineers and traffic tax. The bus drivers collectively pulled in seventy thousand dollars in overtime. That's over one hundred thousand dollars in overtime for the DOT. How does the city of Long Beach sustain this itself by doing this? And this is not the first year, and I will finish that up by saying, who was watching the DOT in 2015? Who was in charge of scheduling and tracking overtime? And whom do you, the city council, hold responsible for the DOT?
Thank you, Ms. Bolosevich.
You've asked some detailed questions, I'll ask them to be looked into and we'll get back to you.
Okay, I've already sent this, the overtime information to you. Did you guys look into it? I sent it to the whole council. Are you guys reading emails? You are, okay.
We are looking, we'll look into that.
And then as far as the NIMTIC stuff, I do believe I sent that out. Perhaps the person who writes the transit grants could answer. Are these new, I mean, we're talking about three quarters of a million dollars that have come in, is this new positions? Does anybody know anything about the Department of Transportation? Who's sitting up here right now?
Sorry, you've asked some detailed questions. You did not send these questions to be invited to? Okay, I understand that, and so I'm getting these now, and I'll let you get the responses.
Okay, the simple, the most simple question was, who's responsible for the DOT in 2015? Writing grants. So I just want to know who I can like address.
Do you have an answer to that? I understand there's a lot of questions there, Ben.
Right, but that's the, yeah, that's a pretty basic question. Who's responsible for the DOT?
In 2015, I believe, well, Mike Robinson and Jerry James were working on that.
Okay, so Michael Robinson and Jerry James, so. It's quite unfortunate that you're unable to bring either them up here to answer questions about overtime, or are we getting bus shelters? When they come in? All right, well, you know, maybe next time you can actually answer these questions.
Thank you, Ms. Blanchett. Here we have Mr. Sam Pinto. What's this, Pinto, good to see you.
Good evening, good evening. Thank you so much, Sam Pinto, Long Beach. A few questions real quick. I'd like to welcome back President Torres from vacation. We missed you last council meeting. There was a pretty strong discussion about the council presidency, and there's also a lot of news about it. Wondering if the city could give us an update on that. My other question, thank you for the tax assessor for bringing that information on settlement, about this Suntory process on, I guess, tax grievances of some sort. Settlements in general, question on that, is there a council to vote on it? So is there like a number or a price that when you settle on something, if they go to the city council, they got a vote on it? And things that are below that number should have to be made public to the residents, because those can be considerable if you add, you know, let's say it's twenty-four thousand nine ninety-nine, they don't have to vote on it, we could go on twenty-five thousand. Those can add up, and the residents don't know anything else about that. And I just, I couldn't help but question on the carbon dioxide, I know a little bit about that. I read in two sources that the city wasn't a violation, it was perceived violation to the fire marshal, and then I saw the city manager say that there wasn't an issue with that, and food waste and clarification. Was there violations? I know they were corrected. I'd start off.
That is a very good question. I don't have an answer for you, I have to make a jacket, but I will, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, I don't believe, my understanding was that there was not a violation. I know we both are building the fire commissioners here and our EPW commissioners here, and they can correct it from wrong. I was disappointed to learn that we were not required to have carbon dioxide detectors. From my perspective, we ought to have, and so I ask that we do have them.
Okay, well, so did we, the answer is yes or no? Yes or no? Maybe someone else in higher conduct has to decide, will you?
Why don't you finish your remarks? I already said that.
I don't want you done, I mean, I was looking for a little bit of feedback about the city council president. I know that there was a lot of discussion when you were away about, I need some more from the council president, and you were away, so now you're back. The settlements, does the public have to know about settlements that are below a specific number? So what is the number and what's the process? And thank you.
I mean, I can speak to the presidency issue and comment on it. I again requested that the item go on the agenda, the city manager turned down that request because, again, the majority of the council do not want it on the agenda. And when I say the majority, Councilman Mandel, Vice President Malavo, and President Torres. So we are here again today, and it's not on the agenda. I had requested that we speak about it at our last caucus meeting, but the meeting was canceled. I was available for the meeting, Councilwoman Moore was available for the meeting, but we did not have that meeting, and so the issue and the issue that you brought up, we did not discuss. So again, it's not on the calendar today.
Thank you.
Yeah, and just to answer your question, Ms. Moore is correct, and Ms. Gagnon, that we are not ready at this point to be able to do that. But I did want to make a correction, Sam. I think that there, in addition to a lot of respect for you, the, I was not on vacation. I take care of my hundred-year-old father.
Oh, I, oh, no, yes.
I don't go on vacations for, I only go four months to take care of him. I take turns with my brothers and sisters, and I don't mind mentioning that to everyone, so I don't want to go to that many vacations.
Completely understood.
Thank you.
Just for clarification purposes, by the characterization, makes it sound that that issue about presidency was just declined by three members of the council that they put on the agenda. There was a clarification why it wasn't put on the agenda. There were some issues that the council wanted to review, there was a report, investigation, I don't think, not pretty much details here, that I can only speak for myself, I wasn't providing with this investigative report, now that I have it. I think that the council members felt the same way, and I believe Council President Torres put in a notice that I received at the very least, why the issue of presidency is not being addressed now. It's not that it's not going to be addressed, but I think council members just want to put some more clarification regarding that investigation.
I appreciate you doing that. So just so, follow up, was there an investigation on the city council presidential transition or something separate?
No, there was an investigation regarding claims outside of the tax presidency, but the report ended during the presidency, and that didn't involve the council.
Okay, thanks for the feedback.
Thank you so much.
I just want to follow up, just one more thing. I would just encourage the council to address this, and we've been waiting quite some time to take this vote in the sphere of transparency, in the sphere of what's fair. I was hoping that the council would be able to get together this past Wednesday and discuss these issues. So I would just request that it be a priority so that this item can go on the agenda, and we as councils can discuss it candidly.
Certainly will be taken into advisement and very seriously taken into advisement.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Sam.
Might I wait for, find out about the carbon dioxide?
I have a question, or it's pretty clear, but my understanding is we were not required, I was advised that we were not required to have them. I think that's sufficient, I probably would agree, so we wore them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Our next person is Mr. John Witz. How are you, sir?
Hi, sir.
Welcome, welcome. I'm glad, I'm so glad that the folks stayed with us this late to, to address these important issues that are coming up.
Yeah, how you doing, everybody? Just six months till the beach season, and I was just going to give some recommendations on how we could possibly enhance our bus service for the summer. So, you know, our population swells during the summer from Memorial Day to Labor Day. However, the city operates the same bus schedule, except, you know, they have their trolley wherever it goes, depending on where it goes. Anyway, an increase in the bus service on weekends will reduce traffic pollution, D-Weeks. Increased bus service will enhance our ability to get around town, navigate between the West End and Central and East End. Visitors will also be able to navigate through the city. Yeah, recommend the changes to the schedule if they can do that. I mean, I'll send a follow-up on us and email something like that, but it's like just a rough suggestion. Like Friday nights between seven PM and one AM, operate twenty to the headway. Saturday from twelve PM to one AM, operate fifteen to twenty to the headway. And Sunday from twelve PM to ten PM, operate the same headway. And the reason that, you know, you speak to many people in town and they can't get around, you know, we'd gladly take the bus, but it's like if you miss the bus, you never see it again. So if we ran like a, you know, a great, a good schedule, people would take the bus and get around, need their cars. And regards to trolley, I would recommend that it operate about, instead of the loop that it's on right now, kind of like a hybrid, like East End, West End, we would operate out of the, let's see, be scheduled to leave like the vodges, pull into the east loading area, then it can operate east, come back from wherever it is on the East End, and come back and stop at the West End turnoff and make its way on the West End route. And then you can build your schedule around that and edit your service in between. So a couple of ideas to offer the people, be offered a road pass, be a seasonal beach pass, create twenty dollars to the beach pass, and I would give them like unlimited rides on the weekend. Or like a hopper pass, throw it by hours a person, and allow individuals to ride all day. They do that in Ocean City, and it reduces traffic pollution and makes it easy to get around. Or you could also, with the anticipated decrease in the ridership, you could offer interior and exterior bus advertising as a way to make some money, show many of the businesses, if there was a good bus service running and people are taking it, they consider advertising on the bus, and that's a good reputation. Anyway, just to pass this on, if you don't mind, you can email me, I have something, a little detail, we'll do, and just to hopefully we can get the bus service running good or something. Thank you.
Thank you.
So good, thank you again, that's, those are excellent suggestions. We, you know, it's only recently that I moved into the West Waldland area in the walks and noticing that on Grand Street, that is such an important stop and so many people, and so I really welcome these suggestions that you bring.
Yeah, just like the increase so you can all day around town, there's a lot of people can't bike, a lot of people can't afford a taxi, you know, they can ride with buses, we'll leave our cars home, you know, thank you.
Very important. Thank you again, Mr. Witz.
President Torres, if you could, if you could, I'd like to say something. I see the director of the housing authority, Mike Cruz, sitting in the back, and I thank you, Mr. Cruz, for coming to the meeting tonight. There's been several questions in the last few months or more concerning the rules and other issues that have been raised in the housing authority, and people have been requesting that they're rerepresented from the housing authority. So if people aren't aware of that, perhaps they can speak to you after the meeting, but I do thank you for coming, and, you know, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Gagnon. We have our last person, and certainly very welcome to Ms. Aynan Heshen. Welcome, Ms. Heshen.
Hi, I'm Aynan Heshen, vice president of West Beach Street. I had a list of things, a lot of them have uncovered. I too was very concerned to see us in the top ten in Newsday again, always with the highest salaries and highest overtime. Presidency, since it was said by this council at the very beginning that it was going to be a revolving thing, it seems easy enough to me to revolve it. Just revolve it and stop this whole thing that's going on with it. It doesn't need to be an issue. I'm also very concerned about Brady. If all of us are paying our two hundred dollars or whatever the amount is, I really look forward to seeing what's going to be on posted at that. A new issue is the LBG GT parade that's coming up in June, it's very soon. Is there a committee that's working on that? Have they figured out where people are going to be housed for two days? Somebody had mentioned that it would be like three days of Irish Day, and one day of Irish Day is good, three days is too much. Is that being worked on? Is that definite? Is it really going to happen? I'm happy to have them in our city, I just hope that we have the accommodations for them.
Why don't you finish your remarks a little bit?
Okay. Social bikes, I'm just wondering, it looks like it was a very successful business, and I'm wondering how much the city has made from that. Was that good for us? Are we going to have it again next year? And finally, something that I think is easy, I love the idea of having special people on the ornaments on the Christmas tree. I nominated somebody, and I know her name is up on one of the ornaments. However, I thought it was great when she was notified by the city. She would be surprised to hear about it, but you don't notify people that they're on the tree, right? So I just wondered, how do they know if they're, maybe I'm up there, I don't even know, how to pull down all the ornaments and look. But I think it would make a lot more sense, number one, if they were notified, and then if we were notified on the city page or somewhere about what these people have done. Because when we nominate, you have to write a note, something about them, saying what they did for us. And I love the paragraph where you ask, for these people who have done so many things for our community. So maybe for next year, you'll be able to do that. That's it.
By the way, thanks for the helpful suggestion on the tree, that's really nice. First, I'll take the question we had on social bikes. Their contract says that once they hit their break even, then they, then we start to get a profit share with them. And I think the projection for that was in the third season, if memory serves, they just finished their second season. So we're very much hopeful for that. And by all accounts, it seems to be very successful, we'll look to encourage.
So they, they were updated for two years, so we don't get anything from them?
We don't know, they did a large capital investment.
Okay.
And I would also mention that we're encouraging them to operate as much of the year as possible, as it seems to be really catching on around the city. It's a nice thing. And regarding the prior weekend for June, there is a planning process underway, and from all aspects of the event, and it seems quite thoughtful and serious. I do not expect that you'll see a weekend on Irish Day.
I was thinking people sleeping on the beach. One more thing with the bikes. Every time, Mr. Torres, that you mentioned, you asked new people if they will possibly consider putting up bike racks. Since we're always, what do you call it, allowing new businesses not to have parking spaces, why don't you tell them to get a bike rack? I think that would be much better. Say, we really expect you to get bike racks. I think that would be much better, say we really expect you to get a bike rack. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Heshin. Thank you, everyone, for staying with us until this hour, and again, again, we welcome everyone's comments. Our next meeting is the 20th of December, so we hope to see you again. Thank you, everyone.